Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Middletown School Committee meeting to order on Thursday, December seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Hewitt is absent, but all other members are present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First on the agenda is the public forum. Individuals may address the school committee on only one relevant education-related topic, not included on the agenda, nor related to personnel or job performance, nor revealing personally identifiable identifiable information regarding students. Individuals may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the superintendent prior to the start of the meeting. Non-agenda items discussed under public forum will not be voted upon at this meeting.
Are there any forms?
No, there are not. Okay. Next, we go to action items. Okay, so first and then during discussion, okay, so I need a motion, but not a vote, a motion in a second.
Motion to go to action items?
Yeah, motion.
Okay, motion to, I make a motion to interview the executive search committee for the superintendent's position.
Second, all right, any discussion, we can have these two nice gentlemen come up and you're welcome to join us up here.
That's right up here. Great. And it's Mr. DeRusi and Dr. Victor Mercurio.
Welcome. Thank you for coming here and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Well, thank you for asking Nezdeck to be here and assist you with a very important job of the superintendent's search. My name is David DeRusi and I am recently the new director, executive director of Nezdeck. I started with Nezdeck a year ago, but I have been in education well over thirty-four years. I've been a superintendent in Massachusetts, but thirteen of those years, principal, high school, elementary, middle, I've basically been around the block a couple of times and I've enjoyed multiple aspects of the public education life. I'm now working as fun as deck, as its executive director and our goal is to continue to do the good work. Nezdeck is seventy-eight years old and we have been in the business of assisting school districts on multiple levels for a long time. I'll let this gentleman to my right into do some selfie.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Victor Mercurio. I spent, well, not quite thirty-four years, thirty-three plus as an educator. I was the last ten years in public ed, a thirty-year career with superintendent of schools in East Greenwich, overseas, overseas. I'm currently, my day job is currently, I'm an associate professor in the Education Leadership doctoral program at Johnson and Wales University. I'm actually a former board member of Nezdeck as well and also spent time as a board member and trustees member for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and the Commission on Public Secondary Schools. For the purposes of this search, I'm kind of shadowing Dr. Pealucci, who is taking the leads.
And Dr. Pealucci could not be here this evening, so I came down in her stead. Again, very accredited person in the field of education known by many in this area. And I'm thrilled to have both of these people coming on board with me as we are trying to maintain, you know, a high level of consultants in the field. So this search will be Judy and Victor and you'll see me in and out, but it is, that's what Nezdeck is all about. We're a small office, there's three full-timers and two part-timers, but we put together a team. And at any given moment, we're all interchangeable. So if there was a moment that Victor could not be here and Judy called me, I'd be here. We support them from the office with anything they need. We stay in contact. We'll have Zoom meetings after, you know, Monday or Tuesday to go over the next steps. So really tonight, my goal is I brought down what would be the actual search assistant, the outline of how we will conduct the search for you. Give me if I take my glasses on and off, I can, I need them to see and read your name tag, but then I can't see what's in front of me, so it's a circus.
Yeah, I have these two.
Yeah, I do this all day. I'm like, yep, on and off. So if you look at the assistant, search assistant outline in front of you, I'm just going to highlight this document and tell you basically how it works, what we do for you, and then we'll have questions and answers. If you see anything that pops into your head, just say, Dave, I have a question and that's fine. Okay, so Nezdeck, as I said, we have been helping, you know, school districts for well over seventy-eight years. And part of what we do is helping find superintendents and as of late, we're moving into special ed directors, principals, finance managers. So we're really starting to expand based on the needs of the communities and states we represent. So the first thing we do is meeting for the planning and organization. So this would be the first meeting. The second meeting that would happen would be truly to look at the organization and the layout of the search itself. This gives you an overview of everything we will be doing as Nezdeck for you. So when I am finished tonight and we're ready to leave, I'll leave a card with somebody because there's a little homework that the board has to do before the next meeting. So we'll talk about that on my way when we're done. So our job right now really is to collaborate with the, you know, school boards or school committees and on the overall search development. And it's with your help and ours, we develop a timeline for the search. There's a draft of a timeline on this, which I'll go to as we get to write through this. What makes us, I think, a valuable resource in this work is our, you know, national and regional reach. So you can see that we will work with you to personalize an application letter. Then Nezdeck will start the recruiting and we also are partners with the National School Development Council. So what we're able to do is target both, not only local Rhode Island, New England, we can target a wider audience for you and get your information, application, who you are and what you're looking for in front of them. Yeah, and again, advertising for us, we do a lot of the basic school spring top jobs, which is in Edweek, ASA online. So when you start to look at Edweek and ASA online, those are national organizations that would be putting your position in. The other thing we do go, we do look at the National Alliance of Black School Educators. We, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents and Professional Diversity Networks. So we try to go out larger and target specific groups and audiences that would be interested in these positions. Our electronic outreach, we use Constant Contact and within our Constant Contact, we have thousands of of email contacts everywhere from some beyond the realm of New England states, many, and we're all, we're close to three hundred affiliates. They would all get postings from us. People constantly will check the Nezdeck website to see if there are postings, if they're available. I am new to the job, but I'm starting to be involved in more searches. And what I've noticed is we're also starting to see more people applying for jobs in the United States, but well beyond the New England region, New Hampshire, I just finished a search and the superintendent is from Missouri. So we're starting to see a large pull. And when talking to these candidates, they're really looking to start over and look, and they're willing to, you know, say, you know, we're ready to leave Minnesota and come to New England. And so we're starting to see more of that. And again, our outreach is pretty electronically, we send them out, you'll touch a lot of people. A constant contact broken down by superintendent, assistant superintendent, finance managers and even principals. So it doesn't just go to a superintendent's office and disappear in an email chain. We target as many viable candidates in the field of education that belong to us. And our constant contact is updated regularly. We go on, we change them as superintendents are hired, as superintendents retire. So we keep it up to date. We also recruit some candidates. So as I said, Nezdeck has been, you know, in the business for a while. People will reach out to us. We're running a NADIC search. I had two superintendents that I had worked with in the past call me and say, you know, they asked the same, what do you think? I always tell them, I think it's a solid search, a good city, and, and they will contact us. And our consultants tend to be still active in the field, which is a help because their outreach happens just in conversation with other professionals that they are, will be called and say, you know, you know, Victor, you're on this search, I saw your name, what do you think? So we do have a lot of pull that way where people will reach out to us. And if we know people are looking, we'll tap them and let them know too and say, hey, you know what, they're looking for a superintendent down in Rhode Island, what do you think? So there's a lot of outreach there. Community-wide needs assessment, this is where focus groups come into play. And I think Nezdeck does a nice job with the focus groups. So you have four, you have up to six, four to six focus groups. What those are is we, it can be done both in person, we're back to doing some in person and some, they still want to do like Zoom meetings. The Zoom meetings I'm seeing tend to be stronger for the community and the parents to go in and log on and not be in a building at six o'clock at night or seven, but able to have access to it. But yeah, we've been back in person and the focus groups, we come in with two prompts and the goal of the focus group is to gather all the data from stakeholders. And then we, Nezdeck, will work, we code it. Our job would be then to be able to build a candidate profile. And that candidate profile is really the work of the district, the community, the pack, all the stakeholders is say, this is what we're looking for in the next superintendent and themes emerge. And what we do is we pull all those themes together and we present a document to the school board, a draft. This is what we heard. This is what we've written down. This is your candidate profile based on the focus groups. There's also a survey, which, oh, I'm sorry.
What are the two prompts?
What traits and characteristics would you like to see from your next superintendent? And in the first six months of the new superintendent's jobs, what are some of the challenges and tasks? So a cat, they're broad, but they capture, and that's how we're able to code it all in. And the themes start to emerge from what we hear in those. So the consultants would be there, they'd run those focus groups on whether they're virtual or in person. And the data comes back. We also have an electronic survey that goes out. That's valuable for a lot of reasons because the people that can't make the focus groups are, for whatever reason, you are able to then reach out into the whole community, teachers, parents, everybody has a right and an opportunity to go in. And the prompts are about the same. It's three open-ended, but there's some real, you know, you just want to, you know, choose, we want more communication, more of this one words, but there's also opportunity in the survey itself that would allow for those open-ended responses. And we pull all that together, you, we give it all back to the school board, but the candidate profile would be written and approved by the school board. And then that really sets the anchor for G, which is the screening of applications in the screening committee. So I think this, the work Nezdeck does with the school board around the screening committee and how the screening committee functions. And I know, I, I know I'm the executive director, but it is what really is the rubber meets the road right there. We work, we'll come in in-person meetings with members of the screening committee, which the board will pick with, will help you figure out who, how and where. And that screening committee does really the bulk of your work. They're going to take the applicants that we collect. They're going to get them all. They're going to read through them. And then through, almost like a straw poll, which we help with, they're able to say, I really want to see Dr. Victor Mercurio. And they'll hit a little simple survey, it's all done independently, want to see number one. Oh, Dr. DeRusi, yeah, we liked him, he looks good on paper, maybe not, we'll somewhat like to see him. And then pick somebody else, doctors, whomever, don't want to see this person at all. So that's done by the screening committee. We'll work with them prior to that. Give them the information, how to make that, help them, but they do that on their own. So they'll see the applicants. And the way that's done is very, we, we pride ourselves on confidentiality at that point because screening committees need to know, and we talk a lot about that in the training. They'll be able to get a link that will go right to the, just the screening committee and they'll be able to link and see all the applicants. They'll spend time going through all the paperwork. It's a paper screen. And their job would be to decide how many candidates then do they want to interview? And we're there to help them with setting up the interview schedules and do all that. So that process, we come back once all the interviews have been done and we work with them again. And they'll tell us, meaning Nezdeck, who they want to move forward to the board. The board makes the final decision. The screening committee's job is to make sure they're giving you, the board, the best possible candidates to interview. Then Nezdeck comes back and we work with the school board on how to set up the interviews, what do you, you know, and walk them through the process so that they understand, okay, this is the screening committee's role, this is now our role. And we are now the people that will make the final decision. So all that goes into that whole interview process, screening process, we put a lot of time and energy into that. And I think that's, having now lived on this side, where I have been in searches before as a superintendent through Nezdeck. But to see the amount of time, energy and, and really just collaboration that we put into that because that is so important. So once that's all set to go and, you know, the interview schedules, you, the board will make their final decisions and with, with any luck, you have the right candidate in the right place at the right time. The other things we do is we administer all the search details. So we monitor the paperwork. So the posting goes out, all applicants come back to us. We organize it, we, we check in on them, we make sure they're complete packets. We make sure they have their three letters of references, we do all that. So that when we do hand it off to the screening committee, all they're doing is reviewing the paperwork on the applicant. They don't have to worry about anything, but is this a person you'd like to interview? We maintain ongoing communication. So one of the things we will need for you to think about is who will be the school board liaison? And sometimes it's not the same person that is the screening committee liaison. And one question that always comes up, can school board members be on the screening committee? Yes. As long as you don't violate any quorum rules or whatever. So the liaison is important because that will be the person who will be dealing directly with the Nezdeck would be Judy, Victor or myself if they needed anything. Or like this, we sent a packet of information out. Who do we send it to and then how does it get distributed?
So I have a question. So there'd be a liaison, you said two liaisons, one with the screening group and what was the other one?
I, oh, just the school board liaison. Sometimes it's the same person. The reason we need a school board liaison is that should I get a call, Nezdeck, about this search, we don't want to answer for the district. So we would refer it back to the school board liaison person, say, no, this so-and-so, Mr. So-and-so is involved. They're the liaison for the search. You want to ask, we just had that happen on a recent search. It was one of the local newspapers, we like, nope. This is the person you talked to. I'm currently doing a search where the liaison is both school board liaison and screening committee liaison. So in the next round of meetings with us, that's what we would go into more details on. Is the choosing of how do you go about choosing your screening committee? Who should we have on the screening committee? This tonight is just really to walk you through the whole process from start to finish. We're always, we, we stay in touch with, with the liaisons. We tend to constantly check in. That's where Zoom is helpful because if you are the liaison, we can set up a quick Zoom meeting, how did everything go? This is where we're at, we're coming back for this, we still need this, and it works out well. Follow-up, again, we're a team at Nezdeck. At any given moment, anytime someone has a question, you may not have the answer. You just reach out to any of your consultants or you just reach out right to Nezdeck, the office itself will get answers and we'll follow up with you. I think the key here is search design flexibility. This is your search. We're facilitators of that search. Every district is different. Every state has different wants, different needs. So our job as facilitator is to work with you, provide you with information, help you make decisions. But we're not here to tell you how to run your search, what you need for your search. We're here to help facilitate the, the school board's work. And I think that again, sets us a little bit apart. We will not attend, you'll go through this in the next meet, we don't attend the actual screening interviews or the interviews for the finalists. That's been Nezdeck policy for a long time and I believe and I agree with it. Sometimes when the search agent is in the room, the applicants are talking to the search agent, they think we're making the decision. And that's not what we do. We'd rather, we'll be there. If we know the dates of the interviews, we're on call, you'll, you can, you, your consultants will let you know if you need us, something goes awry, text or call, we'll be there, but we're not in the room with you. So we'll help set all that up for you, advise how to do it, what's a good idea. But no, that's something we step back from, but we're there on call should the actual process hit a bump.
So with those interviews, with the screening committee and even with us, do you help with some guiding questions so that?
Yes, that's part of, so when.
I thought so, but.
Yeah, we'll come, one thing that, we've been doing this a long time. So we, we always send out templates and packets of information prior. So at the next meeting, you would be meeting with the consultants and they're going to be walking you through now the search process. They'll walk you through how to set up a screening committee. So when we're ready to come in for that screening committee first meeting, everybody will all, they will receive another packet that looks very similar to this with documents in it. It's a template on how to send out an email or a letter to ask people to join the screening committee. We'll have things, we'll have questions and themes. Some of your themes and questions might change based on your, those focus groups and your candidate profile. Because then you could target, well, focus group said they're really looking for a leader that has experience in budget work and community engagement. That comes out as a strong theme. We back it up with the language bullets underneath. So now when you're talking, developing your questions, you want to be able to get to those theme type questions.
But you help, you help formulate those questions.
We give you everything you need and then look at you and say, all right, that's where the liaison for the screening committee comes in very important.
Got it.
Because they're going to finalize and formalize it all. You'll hear this again, the screening committee, depending on how many people you want on it. I've seen them as small as nine, I've seen them as big as twenty-two. But remember, they're our interview. So we always try to encourage people, you can't have fifty in-depth questions. You want questions that scratch that level as, you know, you had two doctors here telling you they know the answers, which doctor was able to hit all ten of those questions with a solid amount of accuracy that you then say, you know what? That, that Victor Mercurio is worth another look and he gets moved to the finalist. And that's the process of the screening committee. That's why it's really, that's the bulk of the work. They, they will work hard in that time period. And you'll, again, more information on that, but like, talk to you about screening committees. I, I like doing that work the most with them because they're really engaged and you, and you see the struggle. They take it seriously. And they take pride in that one, ten days, two week period where you start with, here's your applicants, here's your interviews, who's going to be the finalist? And they, they really work hard. So. And the rest is really, you know, self-explanatory, but we're here, we work with you, we facilitate your search. And that's kind of the twenty-minute rundown of a hundred and twenty-day process if you look at the timeline.
Can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
A silly question, and if I was here earlier, I would have asked Georgia. Does a superintendent here in Rhode Island have to be licensed or certified?
Yeah, yes, you, you, now, go ahead.
Go, no, yeah, and so in other words, they have to be paperwork. I could have asked you that earlier, but I'm just.
They have to have the right.
They have the right, so if they come from another state, they would definitely get the ride certification for the Rhode Island certification.
You have to get a ride certification.
Yes, yes.
I, because I know Massachusetts requires.
Everybody.
Everybody does.
Everybody does.
One year as an interim superintendent in New Hampshire. So I retired and did an extra year because I'm not good at retiring. And I applied for a New Hampshire cert and you basically, it's just a matter of.
I knew for teachers, but I.
It's the same for super.
Definitely, they, they need, they need an administrative credential, administrative degree above and beyond a teaching certificate.
It's fine, but I, teachers, we all.
Right, yeah, we all have to keep the certification.
Should have looked it up.
No, good question.
It's a good question.
People don't understand though, that that is why salaries are what they are because people in these positions have a lot of credentials and they went to college for a very long time. It's like doctors, I mean, it's a lot of years of training and education and work.
So again, you have a draft time sheet. This kind of just shows you the, the highlights and milestones. So it's roughly a hundred and twenty-day process. And what we'll do is once we know when the board wants to appoint the next superintendent, we work backwards with a timeline. So we go from the day you said, we want this done by March twenty-seventh. The consultant gets that information, works backwards with a timeline, we come in at the next meeting with a draft timeline. And again, everything's draft, school board approval for everything. Our job is to present it to you and say, this is what we heard, this is the timeline, how does it work? And people look at it and say, yep, what, we got this budget meeting on this night, can we move this? And that's the process. So it's a, everything we give you is in draft. And it's up to the board to say, yep, we like it, it works. And then we come back.
And this is clearly the time to be doing this.
Yes, yes.
And the most popular time to do it to get the most candidates or how does that?
I would say, yeah, this gentleman's been in the game a long time too. Yes, you're, you're in the right spot. We're, we're currently finishing, maybe I just, we finished one in New Hampshire. I'm in, I'm at the screening committee phase in Vermont, we're at the screening committee phase in Hull. So you're not off the time schedule yet, no. But again, last spring, we were doing them, going in like this, presenting in March to get them appointed by June thirtieth. Because there's, for everyone that gets a job.
Right.
There's another job that opens. So. But right now, I would say you're well within a good zone right now.
I would agree.
What are you seeing as far as, so for example, the superintendent you've hired up in Vermont, what, what was the number of, you know, qualified applicants that you were getting for the screening?
New Hampshire was the one we just finished up. We did too, we, we just finished two in New Hampshire. And we averaged, I want to say the one I was running, we had fifteen candidates and it was a small, they're big districts because they're spread out, but it was a small district in there. And the second one, we had, I want to say sixteen or seventeen.
Good, wow, sounds like people are wanting to.
And even the smaller, and the one I'm doing in Vermont is small, it's, but we are up to, it closes next week, but we already have seven candidates and that's for Vermont and in the size of it. So people are interested right now. You still have a body of professionals looking for these roles, these positions. And some are just looking for those moves, like we've all done in the job, you know, you start here and then you're like, gee, I need more of a challenge. I want to go here and I'm sure Victor's done the same thing. Then you get there and go, boy, it wasn't, it was kind of quiet before and now I get a challenge. But we have to, we like, you, you find people that like the work, they're energized by it. So the, you see the timeline there and when we would come back, all those milestones, we'd have dates and times to this. So you could see, here's the end date and we work backwards with you. You do have holidays coming in, you do have, you know, the snow day factor. But that's what I'm worried about up in Vermont right now is the snow day factor.
We have a February vacation, things like that.
Right, and we're working around.
Still be doing things, but it's just because the students are on February vacation, doesn't mean the rest of us are.
Right. And you're always trying to be understanding of candidates too, where if you, when you get that screen, when you're bringing in to screen them and you want to make sure you, you pick a window where they're not traveling for holidays.
So are we, for a district of our size, is, is this something that you see that's common? If they are doing a search like that, that other districts of our size are doing a search like this, because we're not a very big district, but.
No, I.
Size doesn't matter in that sense?
Not in this. Not in this matter. I think the, the goal is you want to be able to work with, with an agency that can get you the exposure you need to bring in the candidates. Plus be able to work with you through the process. This, this is a lot of work. Uh, it, and it's a time commitment and it adds to everything else that a board has to wrestle with, especially with budgets and everything else season coming up. So the more we can do to work with you and help you through that process, I think is what we, we pride ourselves in.
Your districts in New Hampshire, this is a, I would call it a two thousand student district. Sound good? Okay, what were the sizes of the districts you just?
One I, I, twenty, I want to say twenty-five hundred. The other one was a little bigger, probably twenty-seven.
And those were probably regional if I know.
One, they, yes, they were regional. One had, I think, six participating communities and one had three.
Okay, now we have a unique situation. Hopefully by the fall of twenty twenty-seven, we'll be entering a new school.
Right, that's going to be a big factor of.
So when you start to think about those focus group, what, what would the challenges be for a new superintendent in his or her first six months? Starting, you, you'll probably be contracted while you're also moving into a new school. So you would want to be able to flush that out in a question to your screening candidates. Have you had any experience with new building development moves? And so on. And then you can, but now the good part is the application letter allows this district to kind of highlight the work you're currently doing and foreshadow some of the things to come. So if I'm now interested in applying, I'm going to read that letter and somewhere in that letter would be, you know, here's our mission statement, we believe, and there is an air of excitement because in twenty twenty-seven, we'll be moving into a new. So right away, if I'm applying, then in my head, I'm thinking, I should start to think about, have I had any experiences? How do I want to put this in a cover letter? And you start to, so that's the, and again, we'll work with you on that um, application letter, but it's specifically yours.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Exciting times.
I, I probably think you should add to the letter that probably one-third of our students and, and roughly is, is a military.
No, those are valid points. Those, you do want that in that letter.
Yeah.
You get anybody like moving from Texas to come up here that we'd have to pay moving expenses or any?
Again, that's going to come down to, those are the decisions the board would make about. So let's, you, that discussion would happen during the screening committee. So what if we get an applicant from Texas? Most districts at the screening level wouldn't do that. They're nowadays, they'd say, I would ask the question, are you comfortable with Zoom meetings for out-of-state applicants? They decide, yeah, we'll do that. Great. So the, the one in New Hampshire actually did two, one from Missouri, one from Montana, but it was Zoom. If the decision was if you can drive here to get here, yeah, we want it in person. Now finalists, if you decide to bring me from Texas as a finalist, districts all deal with that a little different. Some will, yes, they'll have the cost of, we'll put the person up. Well, Dave, we'll, we ask you to do your own flight, we'll reimburse you because there, you know, districts are worried that I may agree, you booked my flight and then I changed my mind. But yeah, there's multiple, and again, we would work with you. My consultants would be able to talk and walk you through all that. It's the decision of the board on how you want to handle any out-of-state or somebody that can't get here in, in a couple of hours' drive.
Wait, because some districts, the candidates would just pay their own way. And if they were coming from Texas or California, if they've chosen to come to Rhode Island, they'd pay their own way.
For an interview.
For an interview.
Yeah, it goes, it really comes down to the decision of the board.
Yes.
And then if, for whatever reason, you hire the person from Texas, then that's part of the negotiations with the board. Are you going to help me move or am I moving on my own? So those are good questions because uh, these are things you should be thinking about really right now. So that when this process starts, whoever the liaison is, has those answers ahead of time. And even simple things like, do you want them to visit the district, meaning your finalists? Do you want to go to there? Because that adds to the timeline. And those will all be really flushed out with the consultants when the time comes. But it's not bad to be thinking about that now.
Okay. So now the next step for us is that we process this, think about it, and then at Tuesday's meeting on the twelfth, we make a decision and go from there. So we're not voting on anything tonight except to hear the, the proposal. Does anybody have any more questions? Thank you so much.
Oh, we appreciate the opportunity, honest.
Very thorough and very, um, you know, informative and, um, and user-friendly, yes. Um, I like the timeline. I think it's impressive that you can do this in a hundred and twenty plus, you know, plus or minus days. I think this is going to be a good opportunity for Middletown to to see who's out there and what our options are and we figure that out from there. But we will make a decision on Tuesday at our regular scheduled meeting for this month and, um, we will discuss it from there.
My card.
That would be wonderful.
Questions that come up, please do not hesitate.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
You, this was, we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so we had a motion and thank you, sorry. Thank you very much. We had a motion and a second to hear the interview. All in favor? Okay, now, um, that is it for tonight's meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at five oh eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. All right, so Tuesday's meeting is, um, it's going to be, you have executive session.